Biggest consideration is paying suppliers.
I wanna say it's like four hundred thousand.
Okay, so it's already over the number we were thinking?
Would have probably been in the consent agenda, David, from last month.
Yeah.
Yep.
I apologize, Jack. My first opinion on this was totally wrong, the situation.
It's one point one was your dollar.
That's the total and I, there is a breakdown if you would find the estimate itself, a detailed breakdown of the work completed and the materials stored on hand. I wanna say it was about four hundred.
Would've been in this, I, I mean, going back to the exact.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where it would've been.
These are all preliminary engineering reports and everything.
Prob- probably not, unless.
That's all your drawings, right?
Oh, no, that's, that's some other stuff, yeah, that's not, it wouldn't be in there. It's just basically a, a three-page, well, I should take that back, it's about forty when you add the material stuff on there, but.
Alright, so what do you guys wanna do?
I agree with John, we gotta give him something. I mean, it's been hanging, he's got, we either have to give him something or P S go borrow, we have to be okay with the additional charges.
I don't know how you want that in a motion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't know what the.
But I don't.
I don't even know what number we're able to scratch together, just.
I, I wanna be able to get something done quickly, get some dollars there, and if we need to have further discussion, I don't wanna see this wait until the tenth, obviously.
No.
We can't do that. But I'd like to say, I think we've got some conversation to happen, I think we've got some options out there. We all need to explore, need to come up with the best plan. If we have to incur some interest on it, I'm fine with that. You know, it could go a long ways for a lot of people too.
You're okay with paying interest on that? It's taxpayer money.
That's kinda what this is coming down to, we are dealing with taxpayer money here, and that's why I'm a little nervous about this, kinda probably the same position you are, not knowing right now what a dollar number would be as to what the conversation that you three will probably be having, you know, what would, like Vance was saying, what would pacify this for now? We don't know.
Well, I, I think, I mean, I think we need to know before we just come up with a number.
That's kinda right.
I think, I think, I think I'll kinda listen there, Corin, if we get a, if they have a conversation and we get a number and we call them a meeting, a special meeting, and we can do it quickly, we can.
Which we can do.
Then let's put some dates on this, then let's say somebody needs to call KPH by tomorrow, get a dollar number. We have to determine what other options we have by Wednesday, I mean, let's just get some dates then, and let's get some, a plan put in place and let's move forward, because we're gonna sit here and discuss for hours.
Would interest ever be part of a contingency plan? For the.
As far as built into the contingency?
Yeah.
Um, if, if the attorneys use the numbers that we kind of suggested, that there's a pretty healthy contingency in this project.
Would interest be able to come out of that amount?
I don't know that.
That'd be another question.
Unchallenged territory.
I realize that. So that's where I think we have to really explore every possible option.
I, I just, I'm just afraid that if we borrow money and, again, I'm not repeating myself, but it's taxpayer money and, you know, this town, you know, news travels fast and I kinda probably better think about that.
I realize that.
The other side, news travels fast when a vendor does not wanna work with us because we won't pay bills.
All the time.
All the time, and that will hurt us even more. Because that'll drive our cost of all these projects up because they will put contingencies in their project, in their dollar amounts to cover that kinda stuff, knowing that we potentially would be, or they would never bid for us.
I think potentially we have all downsides, no matter which way we look at this thing.
Oh, you, go ahead.
Just a couple suggestions or thoughts. Um, you know, there's a lot less risk to the city if you folks agree to help with interest on carrying costs to the point where force payment is. The second thought I had was if you are willing to co-sign for the loan that KPH would need to take out to cover their costs, then you could share, you know, any of those interest rates and you could also share your collateral to back up that loan that would be requested.
So interesting.
Quite creative.
If I could add, uh, KPH just, they, they indicated, you know, lending capacity, you know, what collateral can they give their bank to get that kind of line of credit to cover these kinda, you know, supplier costs? So that's an interesting idea.
Lucas, what do you think? Is that something that can be, uh?
Uh, it's John.
Yeah, I was gonna say, 'cause that's how it gets into new territory, I believe.
And like, yeah.
Options to explore, I believe, too, you know, along this, another, but I don't know if we're in a position.
Yeah, I'll go in early tomorrow and talk to him.
To make a decision too.
Well, then, I make a motion to make a general plan because we need some dates around this, otherwise we'll leave in KPH and everybody hanging.
I will talk to John as soon as I get to work tomorrow to figure out different funding options, then I'll call KPH. I'll call that Patrick right after that.
So Lucas, what's the shortest timeframe for a special meeting? How much public notice do we need to announce this?
No, you can, just, just have to call the Fargo formal, I don't know.
So was it like a day?
That's it?
Yeah.
It's quick.
We can do that.
No, you just phone call.
And we posted.
Put notice, oh, yeah, put notice on the door.
Posted on the door.
So, we could have another meeting this week?
Yes.
Some cities require three days, but.
So let's, I mean, what I suggest right now before we go setting a date, let's let you guys have a con- conversation initially here so we can see what kind of a timeframe we're looking at. Obviously, expeditiously is the better way here.
And they call up a few by tomorrow.
You know, and then we can see maybe Thursday if we can do it. You know, just say right now, let's plan, if we do it earlier, but let's say Thursday. If we gotta do something, let's try and shoot for that date, unless there's paperwork that's gonna extend. But let's just, you know, let's see what we can do. Okay?
So Dave, did you have a motion on the board?
No, I just wanted, nobody's saying that, I just want a motion to get the, or just get a discussion so we have some hard dates.
Alright, I'll strike it.
Yeah. Yep. I, I think we need to definitely state to KPH, we will work to speed with them, get something through them as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
However, that comes out.
But then let's, let's those guys exercise what the different options are and see what we can come up with. That way we can make an informed decision as opposed to just coming up with some magic numbers.
Can we get a res- can we get an update to you tomorrow sometime?
So are we gonna pencil in Thursday for the next special meeting? Just so that we all, like,
I'll talk to.
Eventually pencil in a block on a calendar.
Talk to John, then KPH, then the mayor, and then we'll let you guys.
Get it on.
We can let everybody know that it's really gonna be Thursday.
Yep, I'd say tentatively, let's just plan on Thursday for right now until tomorrow when we know different, or something.
Do we do something like morning?
Let's see where we're at.
Yeah, that'll work for me.
I have to do it by phone in Bismarck, so, yes, I can do it.
Well, we'll, we'll hear about it. Well, it's correct.
No, he'll be gone too, so we'll have to do it around phone. Is that possible?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, anything else more on this? I mean, we've kinda got it squared away right now, okay? Alright, moving on to the next, I think we are.
My next state.
Yeah. Well, mayor and council, we might as well keep the fun going with Lost River. Not to be light, but, uh, Jack and his engineer, Andrew from Lower Engineering, are here to discuss change orders one through three on the project. I don't know if you guys wanna get up and give a brief, brief little overview of them, what you're trying to accomplish and.
Sure, thank you.
What you wanna do.
Yeah, great lead and great introduction for, uh, asking to spend more money. But, alright, what we have here, we've got change orders one, two, and three to the construction contract. Have you had an opportunity to see the change orders?
I don't know if they have. I explored them to Vance last week, I, I'm not sure, no. Just to give a little overview of them.
Okay, there, so the first.
Uh, change order number one is the, the, uh, in, the infrastructure improvements for the cul-de-sac that will serve the third edition. So it's just extending that, uh, that cul-de-sac to the east there. Um, and, and that change order is around a hundred and ten thousand dollars for that one.
These change or, all three of these change orders, plus an additional one for, uh, lift station wet well, are all included in the bonding. They are a separate line item in the box. So the money will be there, just not at the moment.
Sure. And so this particular change order, what we're asking for specifically, and we talked about this with Lucas and Jim before the meeting, is, uh, that the city would consider approving this change order contingent upon the third edition plat, the final plat being, um, approved. So you guys have approved the preliminary plat at this point. So, the, the specific request is that this change order would be approved, contingent upon the final plat being approved of, uh, Lost River Third Edition. The Lost River second, uh, excuse me, the second change order is for, um, site improvements to our first phase of the park. And I'll show you just kinda what we're looking at for a first phase. So it's in this bubble here. It would be the temporary parking, and then the, the, this bike path, and then the concrete, um, served that would surround the, the jumpkins.
So this is in, uh, in this picture that I got on here, right?
So this is, this, this is the first edition park.
Oh, okay.
So this wouldn't include, you know, as, as part of the, as part of the construction contract, it's already being graded. Storms, uh, buried storm has already provided. Uh, it's already being turfed with athletic, uh, grass. Um, and what we're adding is the temporary parking, and then the bike, the first phase of the bike path, and then the concrete surrounding this jumpkin.
Did I miss anything, Andrew?
No, the only other change is we revised the interior storm sewer plan within the park to better fit the, the final park plan. Dollar change that's very handy for it.
These change orders were developed using bid prices. For the most part, there were some items that were outside of the original, um, items, so.
And that's, those were part of the assessments of the loss, correct?
Yep.
Park.
Correct. Um, the third change order is just to change a few of the, I, uh, some aesthetic items. There's a, a change in the light poles. We, um, we, in, in working with the electrical design, um, engineer, um, we found out that there were some other poles that had, that were less ornate, that were less expensive, and so that would be a, a net reduction in the contract. Um, we changed the color of the buffer fence out on Wall Avenue. We picked out a, a, a fence that we thought was better looking, and that, uh, so those two changes basically cancel each other out. And then, uh, based on requests from the United, uh, the U.S. Postal Service, we increased one of the boxes from a twelve to a sixteen unit on the third change order, so. That would be a description of the three change orders.
Alright, have they got any questions on that?
So in relation to costing, then are paying these bills for these change orders? We're not actually paying for them. They're not gonna come in until we get the bonds?
No, well.
Stuff for our bonds?
No. I, I would assume that they'll do the work, probably before, just because they would like to get, I think they would really like to get that Box Elder and stuff done, just because, uh, they, there is an interim completion date on the project, and that's Lost River Road down at Dietrich. And that's to facilitate some, uh, parade home, say, shows along there and to showcase the subdivision. So I'm guessing that, and Jack would like that done sooner than later too, in that Box Elder cul-de-sac area, but, um, we don't have a real timeframe, do we, Andrew, from them? They've never really given us any type of a timeframe when they wanna start it, or. Um, there are some, all the structures haven't built, or is there still a couple that haven't? Cause that would buy us some time, too.
We revised structures, um, I don't know if we could have built.
Okay, and then the sanitary, then, there's a couple sanitary ones in there, too?
So there are a few changes to build those, it probably come, these have.
Yeah. So, I mean, I wouldn't say that it wouldn't be done before you have the funding in place, but I think that it will be close.
Requesting on these until.
We wouldn't see, yes.
End of July.
Well, right, it would probably be August now. It really would, because we'll cut off quantities for the July estimate. Probably the end of this week, and then the next quantity cutoff would be at the end of July, so this won't be done in, in this next pay period.
August, the meeting, and we have thirty days to pay after that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, my, uh, change order two and three will be on the back end of the project. Change order one, I'm not too sure that, uh, Gary from KPH indicated to me that they, they don't know if they're gonna take that on before the interim completion date, so. It would be very unlikely that they're gonna get these done.
We wouldn't pay for them until they're installed. We would just, once the work is done and installed, then we would complete in place and accept it with the insurer, then we'd be, we'd pay for them then. Anything else, guys?
So we just have to approve?
Uh, we're, we're looking for a motion to approve a contingent upon the final plat of the third edition.
The first change order, and the second and third would be no contingencies.
Gotcha.
So, so we'll move down the first change order.
Second.
Okay. David makes a motion, John does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
I move that we approve change orders two and three as provided. Sorry, just two and three?
So, second.
Okay, David does a motion, Sharon does a second on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Next, Jim? Alright, if you wanna bring up the report, David, I.
Okay.
We'll go through this.
Where were you at?
Probably the bottom.
This one. You're wanting the ditch for?
Uh, no, we'll just start at the top and work our way through it, that way we don't forget anything.
Okay.
So, the two thousand seventeen street improvement projects, all I had on that was this truck route. We've taken care of all of that, so there's really nothing more to discuss on that. Uh, the water meter replacement project, Brian and I did meet this past week, um, we're kinda gonna look at other ways to fund it. I shouldn't say we're kinda, we're going to look at other ways of funding it versus, we are on a drinking water state revolving fund loan, if we choose to go that way. Um, I know we talked to Lucas a little bit about if there was other ways of doing it, or if we wanna do it user rates. Uh, but we were, that's kinda where we're at now, is just trying to figure out where we want to, uh, where we want, how we wanna get that money going. Okay, uh, the lining project, uh, lift station number four is, uh, up in Chestnut, that one, the lining and coating is complete. Tomorrow, the contractor plans on replumbing that station and taking it, taking it off a bypass. It's in the emails. I sent it to you, your email, Sharon. Uh, lift station number two by the elevator, they completed their bypass today. Lining and the coating are scheduled for tomorrow. Uh, lift station number three over on Cheyenne and Park is, uh, being prepared for bypass pumping. This station is scheduled for lining and coating on Thursday at the earliest. Um, we still have some issues with this collection manhole outside of the lift station. I feel scrolled out, scrolled down, David. We've got some.
Pictures?
Pretty pictures here. Yeah.
Pretty pictures.
Oh, you gotta go all through that, yeah.
Two thirds.
It's not in real good shape. And we had that scheduled for lining on this project, and the lining contractor doesn't, they don't think that it's lineable, so. I've got some information out to another contractor to see, and we're kinda just in limbo to see if the best method is to replace it, or see what else we can do with it. So. That is, leads to the next thing, that the contractor is planning to file a time extension request to deal with this manhole. So, this manhole, usually you are able to see about twenty-four inches into it, there's a manhole cover on it. Well, when we had, when the city installed that, uh, coupler and that bend on there, we were able to see a lot more, and these pictures were taken last week. I had the contractor pull the cover off so he could get some good pictures and see what's going on in there, so. We are assessing what the best plan is to move forward with this, and it has kinda delayed the contract a little bit. He didn't get me his request today, I requested it, but, um, I'll hopefully have it for you at the next meeting, so. But this would be the only item to remain, would be the lift station number one, where the manhole lining is complete, the lining is complete, and all pavement replacement is complete, so this would be the only outstanding item if they would have to go for an extension on that.
And you're talking potentially rebuilding this hole?
Taking it out, yeah, putting a new one in.
And you said that would potentially fit under the contract?
Yes, I was informed, the, I asked the health department, and they said that that would be an eligible cost. If you look close on the bottom, you can kinda see where the mesh is showing through, so that's never a good thing when you, if you, I don't know. Yeah, one of those, it's kinda tough to see it, it's easier in person, but that one may be a better one, kinda right down on the bottom there. You can see the first line of mesh, and it's not real good. And this manhole has got two gravel lines coming into it, two forest lanes coming into it, it's got all kinds of stuff.
That's our, that's the main.
Right, right outside the shop here.
Okay.
Alright, uh, Water Improvement District, contracts have been received from the contractor. Uh, the attorney's office is reviewing the construction agreement. Uh, if, if the attorney approves, then we would issue a notice to proceed. We do have a pre-con scheduled for tomorrow at eleven o'clock, City Hall, for this project to.
And this is the looping, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. This one, I believe, the bonds are in place.
Good.
Lucas, do you wanna give a little update on the contracts with this?
Uh, the only concern with that one, well, two concerns, one, they're resigned, and two, the city's not listed as an additional insured. And so Jim requested that they add the city as an additional insured to that.
I haven't got an answer back, but hopefully I'll get one tomorrow at the, uh, pre-job, so. We will push on with that, hopefully have some construction related in, updates for you on the next meeting. Uh, the SSL, the Fargo, plans and specs are being advertised. The bid opening is July sixth, two o'clock, City Hall. Uh, working on the funding, just have to put some of the little contingencies together to get all that going, and then the facility plan. Adelman Drainage Review, received the quotes, if you go down to the, now you went, we gotta go to the end now, or almost the end. We did receive two quotes, one from Glacier, one from JAV Construction. Um, you know, Glacier was the low bidder, quoter to clean out, now this is, to update you or to remind you, this is cleaning out the north ditch along Seventy-S sixth from Drain Twenty-Seven back to the, uh, corner between the landscaper and Adelman addition. That is to clean up the drainage along there, so, um, we do have, like I said, the two quotes. Glacier was nine thousand three hundred fifty and JAV was eleven thousand six hundred, so.
What was the timeframe?
What's that?
ours.
This is our expense?
It's our ditch, it's not Adelman's.
We, we, we requested that I get quotes for cleaning that out to improve the drainage in the Adelman addition, it's been kind of a ongoing problem, and this is outside of his subdivision, this is within city right away, as far as I've been told, so. Um, a timeframe to get this done, I don't have one, cause I was just trying to get numbers for you to approve.
Can you make a motion to move this forward, cause there's drainage issues, and if we don't get this done, we can't guarantee that it's either the division, subdivision or else.
Correct.
So I think we can take this out of the equation, get it done, then we can determine, right, if there's still drainage issues in the subdivision, get him to clean those up.
So, okay.
Right, you'd like that for us to get that cleaned up too, so drain nicely across.
All that to do with me?
Would it affect you?
He's on the good side.
He's on the high side.
Eight or ninety feet higher than they are.
He's the high point.
I'm the high point.
Yeah.
You send it to their, their.
That's right.
Alright, so does somebody wanna make a motion from the bid then, or?
From Glacier, is that the one you wanted, that was the less amount?
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was the.
Least amount.
What was the other one again?
Uh, JAV Construction on the Walcott. We've got some work with them, and just got a quote from them too, so.
How much did I argue?
Eleven six.
It's nine, it's ninety-three fifty versus eleven six.
Yep.
I'd motion to accept Glacier's bid.
Okay, John makes a motion to accept Glacier's bid. Did I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Sharon does a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, sounds good. Get that in play and get that.
Okay, we won't, we won't beat the Lost River horse anymore.
Okay.
Uh, nothing new to report on the storm row policy. The engineer and the attorney have to get together to discuss some of the, uh, ordinances and whatnot in that. Um, Arrowood, Liberty Lane, a punchless item, some of the punchless items were complete. We're waiting to hear back from the contractor about asphalt patching. Uh, Street Improvement District, uh, two thousand fifteen dash three seventy-third Avenue, um, finally heard back today from the last person who has a gravel driveway, and they do not want any more additional paving, so, uh, the only thing that remains is the seal coat. That has to be done by the end of the month, and I will get a schedule from Northern as to when they're gonna get that done. I did not have a chance to get you anything on that pedestrian costing, Sharon, I'll try to get it for you by, by next, uh, the next meeting. And then Olivia's Acres, we received the final plans for that subdivision, uh, last week. The last direction from the council was to not do anything with it until the, uh, Adelman Acres or Adelman Addition stuff was taken care of. Um, are you guys satisfied with that enough to, that we should look at these plans now? Is that where we're, where we're at with that?
I haven't seen a final.
A final, oh, I.
I saw they were missing, missing.
That is.
No, the basketball.
I think everything, I think.
Basketball was up.
Yeah, I think all that squared away.
I just want somebody to have a visual, it's a hundred percent.
Well, I looked at it, I think Perry, you looked at it, that was, oh.
Yeah, so the only thing that I know about out there is that he definitely needs to mow that thing down. I mean, weeds are horrible. Uh, Lucas has sent letters, uh, now just recently to the developers that got such a mess in regards to weeds, noxious weeds. There is a century code in regards that states that cities are supposed to get that controlled, so, Lucas took care of that. I think it'll get handled, but that's what, that's the only thing that I know in the Adelman Addition that needs to be taken care of.
As I saw, it was mud, so now it's weeds.
Yeah. Alright.
So, do you want us to look at the plans, or do you want us to, to hold off on like it was?
As long as it's done, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I think, I think the confirmation should count on the Park Board, too. I mean, I, I believe it's what they, everything that they ask for.
That's probably good.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, maybe finally someone would know what.
We should probably, then somebody should be designated from Park Board to go out there and give it a blessing and with the.
It looks pretty good out there, actually, for work, he did for the Park Board.
Yeah.
I'll talk to Wayne or Julie or Shannon, just have somebody go out and give the, yes, this is what we.
Yep.
So by approving the rezoning or in the, looking at the plans or whatever else, we are gonna have to discuss getting sewer down there now. Is that something that you want us to look into? I know we talked a little bit about it, uh, in the last couple meetings, we never really got any type of a, a directive from the council. Uh, how, how, I don't know, how do you wanna proceed with that? I know it's, it's probably not gonna be this year project, we talked about that, but.
I think we need an engineering report with a rough estimate.
I think that's the, the way to go.
That's what we're gonna need to get started with, but just as long as he's aware that that's not gonna happen this year. We talked about that with him earlier, I wanna make sure he's.
Guaranteed it's next year.
We said that, we said that at the meeting last.
But there's no guarantee it's probably next year, if, you know, because again, we're talking about, we have to assess a whole group of people, and, you know, it's, it's, somewhat assessment habits. I wanna rethink that.
We're dishing up my infrastructure.
I think you need to let them know that before they get too hard into spending dollars. I think there's some due diligence. Hey, if we're not gonna give you sewer till, or date, we need to be honest with it.
And I don't think that they're gonna, this is a privately developed fund, uh, developed, development, and I don't think they're gonna wanna pony up the money if they know there isn't a way to get that sewer out of there, so they'll need some commitment from the city that, and so, or some due diligence on your part that you're gonna provide it with. We did it for Lost River, we provided a letter that said we were gonna provide them with the service, so. Um, I don't think it's a, I think it's a good idea to get going on that, get your estimate and your report and stuff.
Right, I guess what I'd say is, let's get a, let's get a, um, a report together as to what it's gonna cost.
Yep.
Get the preliminary together.
That's a good starting point.
I'm glad it's July, because I think this project needs to be two thousand eighteen project.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I know they're really pushing hard to get it going this year.
Sure.
I mean, I'd be happy if we get the other one this, done this year, don't want to, there's not a chance it's going to happen.
And I think they're, what the crazy thing about, about it is, they're going to be happier because they're going to have a better project.
In the, in the end.
Okay, so, motion from somebody?
I'll motion that we could get an engineering report on the sort of-
Okay, Dave makes a motion, John makes a second.
So it'll, it'll actually be a resolution directing engineering to prepare a report.
Correct. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, yeah, so let's see if we come up with thirty, and see what we can-
We'll get going on that. Uh, the last thing that I have, I kind of steal Perry's thunder, I don't, if you go to the last three pages, I believe, David, we've got, uh, Mr. Holene here to discuss a little ditch modifier, right away modification. Uh, keep going. Yeah, I tagged it online, I wasn't sure Perry was going to tag it or if he wanted me to do it, so I had the information. Scroll up a little bit if you would please.
Sorry, I can't spin this, but-
No, that, no, I did it too when I did it, so, uh, Mr. Holene's here, do you want to give a brief update of what you want to do, or?
Sure, sure, in around two thousand ten- So around two thousand ten, the old bridge that was overhead, you know, iron with wood planks, was replaced on Sixty-fourth Avenue just to the west of County Seventeen. It crossed over into the Greyhawk area on Sixty-fourth Avenue going west. And when the county did that work, they filled in, they put box culvers in. But they also filled in the ditch at the river, it's a very old ditch that used to take water, carry water to the river long ago. So they filled the ditch in back maybe a hundred and fifty feet or so, uh, from the riverbank. Uh, I live further west than that, and my property border's about, oh, close to five hundred feet on Sixty-fourth Avenue. The ditch is very deep and steep there, and so, uh, I've never been able to mow it, a couple times I've tried and tipped the tractor over.
Scroll down if you would please, this is kind of what it looks like, just rough shots, it's, there's a ditch back there.
Yeah, there, there's a ditch, it's always been dry, there's never been water in the ditch. It's kind of a non-functional thing, and I'd like to fill it in, there'd still be a low area there, but I'd like to raise the bottom of the ditch about two feet so I could, you know, maintain weeds and mow and that kind of thing.
Is that going to?
Well, that, what I'm asking you is, um, he's filled out the paperwork, the right away permit and everything like that. What I'm looking for is a direction from Vance, the county happened to come today, so I figured come to council, just to have us look at what he's proposing. And then we can, we can report back, it's just, um-
Yeah, make sure it doesn't interfere with something else.
Yep, exactly.
And some of those ditches are so darn steep that, I don't know, I mean, you'd have to have a mower with a-
A bally.
I have, yeah, my eighteen-year-old run a little power mower down and back, and takes him about half a day and he-
But he needs to exercise, right?
Well, he's leaving for college, so please.
Alright.
I don't know if you need to make a motion, if you just need a direct, I don't know how, how much we do that.
Loop us direction?
Or since they did the permit, you know?
We did, we don't need a-
No, we shouldn't.
No.
I mean, just as a little bit of a, just a little bit of an FYI for you guys too, that when these come forward with the right away applications and they pay their permit to Perry, Vance has just been directing us, if it's a call, driveway culvert or something, oh, minor like that, Vance has just been directing us to size the culvert and do some other stuff, so.
And we did it for Visto, I think.
Uh, I think so.
Was it Visto?
Uh, well, uh, yes, no.
Or who was it? Anyway, just a simple email?
Yes. There you go.
Oh, it was Russ, sorry. That's right.
So, I guess the only question I have is usually when you have a ditch like that in the wintertime, you get a lot of snow in there? And then it, you know, it kind of helps because as it all, it all melts? So I'm just wondering what would happen once if it goes away? Are you still going to have some sort of ditch in there?
Well, yeah, there will be ditches there, um-
Just not as steep?
I, there's a kind of a crook in the river, so I actually have rivers on, on three sides of me. And so if the snow doesn't blow around, it's just like what I was, you know, it feels like there's a kind of drops and that sort of stuff, so.
Very guarded with all the trees and everything, very really serious.
Alright, that's all I have, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Yes.
Alright, so move on to portfolio report, Sharon, you got anything you want to talk about this evening?
Yeah, we're going to order plaques.
You're going to order plaques?
We are, so I'm going to get Dave's nominees, and then we're going to set up a meeting to, to give them out.
What is this question?
To do the presentation, the volunteer of the year plaques, so we're going to get them ordered.
Did she put in the name yet?
Maybe we should wait till, maybe we should wait till August when we know that we don't have to spend money. Anyway, we want to get them, it might be. Um, what else? Still working on the tracks to trails project. Still like to work on the bean days, harvest community days, but haven't really made any progress since the last meeting on, on that. And so, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Brian's not here, Dave, what do you got?
Uh, just trying to review, uh, um, applications for assistant auditor. Uh, I think the total, I only got a few more here, we're bucking pretty close to almost fifty people have applied for it, so.
Seriously?
Yeah, on Indeed, it added a whole bunch of people, so I find the closet, but I reviewed forty-one today and going to try and work with Vance so I can get his feedback too.
Goodness, that's incredible.
Um, we also have seven applications for the assistant, or for the assessor position. One of them was actually from way down south that was an assessor, so I don't know, I'm just going to end up on that one, but we'll let that one go for another week or so and then-
Okay.
Work with Vance, but as you guys are aware, or Paul resident from Cass County is, is going to provide us a proposal on, managing our assessments, or assessor, doing it as a contract.
Through the county.
Through the county, we have not received that, right?
He said July, first of July.
Okay.
And boy, I think that's a great deal of-
I, yeah, I mean, if he wants to do it.
The interim one to get us going or whatever, yes, I think this is Vance.
I thought he was so busy, he didn't want to monkey with it, but if he's, if he's in, that would be a good deal.
The only, the only thing, if I may interrupt there, Mr. Mayor, is that, that, and I think that's a great thing, he's going to take, he wants to take the permits kind of like month, month to month, and so that when our tax equalization time comes, he's done, he's ready to present it. So he's not behind.
Right.
And so, I think that's fantastic, and he offered to send that proposal, I think it's a great idea.
So, yes, we'll have those, you know, the applications or the resumes of those people, but I also, we have to consider that option as well.
I think it's a good deal. I've been working with, you know, prior to, all these years, prior to this, the, uh, the computation of special assessments for all these projects, I outsourced that to a fellow by the name of Dan, by the name of Dan Matson. And I kind of hadn't let him go up any of the year because of failing health and all that stuff, but I met with Mark Pleasure and Mary Matheson at the county here two or three times, and they've agreed to take over those duties as well, at no charge to the taxpayer. So I'm thinking Paul's going to come in reasonably good.
Good.
I hope.
That'd be nice.
Yep, that'd be cool.
I mean, that's, that's what I'm thinking, we have these options now, that's good.
As opposed to paying him a huge salary package.
Yep, it benefits him too, because he gets it all into his system right away, and there's no-
Benefits us, we get the feedback right away.
Well, it benefits us, it gives us dollars, we can do something else with right now where we need it, we need lots of positions and-
Yeah.
Give us a bill and look at something else. That the board gets, when he, I'll, I'll forward all the requests.
Perfect.
That's it.
Okay, good. John, what do you got?
Brian and I met with Kim Stokes a couple weeks ago, and one of the, it came from after a meeting we were visiting. And we feel it's time to get some rendering, some drawings made up of what we would like our downtown. Certain areas are in our city to look like, and I think it's something that it would give people a visual that they can actually see. I'd like to recommend, both Brian and I are wanting to recommend that we contract Kim Stokes out, you know, it's a pretty simple deal. He's been with us, uh, quite a while, he knows what the city is, and I think get him doing some drawings. He already has some made from previous projects, so just kind of start off in small stages and see what he comes up with. What's that?
He did the fire report.
Yep, yep, but we talked, you know, about the water feature.
Put our vision of what we say into a picture.
Yeah, exactly, and, you know, we had different things he's done here, water, uh, we talked about that, I think it would be a great idea to start with.
So what kind of numbers are we talking, John?
He gave the contractor, and I believe I forwarded the contract to everybody.
I did not get that.
Seventy-five dollars an hour for a hundred dollars.
Seventy-nine dollars an hour, that's a hundred, hundred dollars.
Seventy-nine, is that what he said? Okay, seventy-nine.
And if that's something that we, you know, again, we can get a little bids at a time, we kind of do it as we go. You know, it definitely fits in, I mean, seeing this tonight, the, Mr. Chris, Mr. Christensen dropped off to us. This gives us a visual of what potentially we could have. And you talk land space and land coverage, you know, it puts things into perspective.
Yeah.
Is what it does. I mean, that's twenty acres, you know, and we, we took our area out by the school, not to go back down that road, but you, you kind of, you think, oh, you need to have retail all the way up and around, and do we really need that? And this kind of puts it more in perspective for us, because again, our land plan is something we kind of just drew up. We need to evolve that and change as, as things are presented to us and as things change.
I, I think it's a good start, because it'll give us just some high level conceptual, and allows us to be, you know, I'm kind of thinking of what we're doing is we're trying to be agile in what we do, so this kind of gives us one perspective of it. We now have Brent who can help, help us with more planning too, kind of bringing them together, it's not setting us in stone, anything, it's very high level. It's something, you know, to me, it's to get started, we got to throw something at, at the wall to look at and start, and this is just, it's not a lot of money. And like you said, Kim has the background, and if we want to go further, then we can put out for bids or do whatever, and then you go to the next level.
But it's to give, it's to give everybody more of a conceptual idea, as opposed to us just talking about it and all these envision horse meetings. Now you got, here's a piece of paper or something online where we can show you, this is what we're looking at, now let's start banging away at it.
It also comes back when developers come in, they want to put buildings up, they want to put houses up. This, this is what we're thinking, guys, you know, when you're doing this, this is what we want.
It's evolving the overlays like what you're talking about.
That's what I was thinking is, Russ, I talked earlier about the overlay district, and I think that having, having a visual or having a further definition to that, you know, sometimes we forget that, that we have, we even have that.
But it helps you and it helps us.
Actually, we have that in the ordinance because Kim pushed for yours.
Yep.
And, you know, we should have it, you know, we should have the definition all the way down to how wide a bike path should be, and like we talked about, street lights, you know, what kind of street light and all, whatever, everything should, should have some sort of definition so we have a nice contiguous looking city going forward, so.
And John, there should be no conflict of interest being Stokes sits on P and Z.
I don't have, I don't see it, I mean, this is something that is not being constructed.
Right, no construction, contracts or bids.
This is, this is a conceptual plan, and that's kind of the language I think that you use it as, but I-
I think one of the other things too is that Kim's got a vested interest in what the town looks like, because he lives here. Like, does.
He's ET, he's ET, he's not corporate city limits.
Nope. Alright.
You know, pointing to Cass County, that's-
I think he's got technicalities.
But I think it's also the only one in, in town, well, not the, we have nobody in town.
I don't, I don't see a conflict.
Well, he cares.
He does.
I, I don't see a conflict, I see the opposite, yes, I see someone who, who cares and who wants to help the city. But by the same token, he doesn't want to invest a lot of time and not get something for all his work.
Right, I mean, should he pay for his work?
You know, Brian saw, we, we, we saw a lot of drawings we already had done, and we're looking at this stuff, and I'm going, oh my gosh, if we could pull some of his drawings into what we want to do downtown and make it, it would be absolutely rocking. We would have something that nobody else in the area would have.
Lucas, you got any comments on this, I know we've kind of gone back and forth.
I respect my rights, I think they should at least get another quote, because it, I mean, how much money are we talking, it's going to be, add up to-
Seventy-nine hundred dollars.
And if we want to put it to a do not exceed number, if it's lower, I think seventy-nine hundred's a lot, and if we need to, uh, lower that to a do not exceed, sign and send it back. Again, this is something that we can do a little bit as we go, and if we see more, then I, I don't have a bit of problem with this.
Yeah, I guess he's, you know, even for five thousand dollars, we've had multiple bids, because that's kind of our thing, but we've, I mean, could we easily get somebody, something from a small firm in town too, just a quick?
So-
I know it's, it's really easy.
You know, so I don't think, I don't think we go out to bid for every single thing that we do, I mean, sometimes-
No, we don't, but-
I already know that he cut his, his rates down, basically, probably close to the half for this, because it's, it's a concept deal, is what it is. You, you go anywhere else, you're going to get hired, but I already know that.
Which is fine, then you just take his bid, I just, I, one, he's on planning, and then two, you're just taking one bid and not seeking another bid.
It's, we're not bidding anything, it's just, it's a concept.
We have.
It's, it's not, I mean, we might do nothing with it.
It's a service.
We might just put them up on the wall and look at them as pretty pictures, I mean.
If you, if you put anything out on bids, we are required by statute to take the lowest bid, correct?
No, for this, this lowest, no, it's, it can be, you can have, um, certain requirements that you want to meet, so it's like the lowest responsive bidder, the, um, you can do the most responsible bidder.
Okay.
For your qualifications.
Yeah, the qualifications in it.
Okay.
So?
I'd make the motion to accept it.
What Kim was presenting. Okay, so John makes a motion.
And if we want to-
If you want to cap it, that-
If we want to cap it, I appreciate your comments, Lucas.
I think it's, you know-
I know you're always looking to take care of us.
I'm on microphone.
Um, I request amendment to that to cap at seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I would amend that, I will amend my motion.
Uh, seventy-five hundred. It's a little bit, but, I'll second this then.
Alright, so, the motion's on the floor with an amendment to it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, here we go. John, you got anything else?
Nope, that was it. Uh, does Lucas need to rewrite that and send it back? Do we make that, how does that correction get made, or do we just contact Kim?
Request him to make, request him to make a change to not exceed seventy-five hundred dollars. That's all we can send up.
Okay.
Respond to him.
Alright, move on. Um, for mine, I have been in contact with Brent, we've talked, it's a Friday, I lost track of days here, it was Friday afternoon, right? We had a conversation, he sent an initial, kind of some recommendations, uh, some key findings on a draft. We kind of went back and forth on that a little bit, and I just think, I sent him back an email. I'm waiting for him to get back to me on that, and I will send that report to you guys then, because we'll have, kind of we'll have exhausted what I had. I'll send it to you guys then, and I want some, we'll get some feedback on that. He's got some key recommendations, I think they're all good, but like I said, I want some feedback, so if there's other things that we need to consider. But anyway, that was a, it was a good conversation we had on Friday.
Well, yeah, I think now is the absolute most important time to be having these conversations, because-
Absolutely. That was that thing on Friday too, that was, this is timely, I think it probably, probably should have done this about a month ago, but that's okay.
A year ago, two years ago, yeah.
But we're on track, we're on track now. He's, he's done a lot of exploration on how things are going around here, and I think, like I said, his key recommendations are good. It was nine o'clock, we were having a conversation with him, I, yeah, this is going to be helpful. He will be here, Jim, tell me again, he's going to be here next week, Tuesday, he'll be here for the finding and zoning meeting, Wednesday and Thursday.
That sounds correct, yep.
Yeah, so we're going to have some meetings with him when he's on site here.
So is he going to be here Monday?
That I'm not, I don't think so, I think it's Tuesday he's coming into town.
Okay, because it would be nice if, I mean, it might not be, obviously it's- Okay, because it would be nice if, I mean, it might not be, obviously it's not this month, but maybe next month he puts it on his agenda that he's here so he can visit with Park Board because they could use some insight and some assistance in their planning for future parks, bike paths, et cetera. You know, that whole, what is your vision, I think he can maybe help steer them.
I mean, yeah, we have.
Motivate them or give them some suggestions.
We're still sitting around sixty thousand foot, we haven't really zoned down yet, but yeah, I agree by next month.
They say regional park and they just put a star, but they don't really know what that means and I think he might help put definition to, and, and maybe draw from them what they're trying to, what, what they're trying to get out there. Because that would be really helpful for all of us.
So when he's on site here, we can talk about that when the next, uh, next time he's back in town, because I think he wanted to be here on a monthly basis.
Yeah, I believe so. Can we think about putting a cap on the number of hours being that the city's paying a hundred percent of his time, that Park Board does want to use his time after X number of general planning hours that they have to pay for? Being that we're two different tax entities?
We can certainly talk about that.
I mean, I certainly believe we need to give him some time to get him started and that kind of stuff, but.
Yeah. All right, I will.
I think that's fair for that too, you know, you can have his time up to X number of hours and, and, because they won't use it fast, I'm sure.
Got it, boy.
Way to be, Russ, way to be a team player.
Okay, that's.
I was talking to John and he said he talked to the bonding company and they're gonna try to get it done by July fifteenth to get the numbers in. And then he said, John said he will be at the meeting, um, if we have a social meeting on Thursday, he'll be there.
Okay.
And then I'm bringing tomorrow morning early to talk to him.
So if, if the bonding company isn't done by July fifteenth, the funds are available when? Are we still talking August?
Uh, John, I think it's not like it should be around that time, almost, middle of July.
Okay.
Well, let's start with specifics first.
Still have that conversation, we'll see where we're at tomorrow with that.
Yeah, I'll talk to all of them, but just letting you know, it's three weeks in here.
Okay, so I'm done with my portfolio, Perry, you're up.
Okay, I sent everybody the minutes for P and Z for SharePoint, I was gone last, part of the last Friday and that, so I didn't get that turned in. Uh, but, uh, there's forty-nine total permits today. The permits, uh, have slowed down a little bit right at the moment, I don't know why, but they have. Um, and at the last meeting, I gave some information, uh, Brian had requested some information to look at the permit application and stuff so we can put an application online. And, uh, so I gave him that information and he was going to review it and get back to me. Other than that, the issues that I had was Dan Hollein, we've taken care of that, Lakeview Heights and, uh, developer's agreement in regards to weeds and subdivision and I, I think Lucas did a fine job taking care of that for me too, so, uh, that's it, I'm done.
Perry, I have just, uh, one statement on your, and Amy will bring it up, she was not at the last meeting on the thirteenth, so.
What?
Amy was not at the meeting, you say members present was everyone, Amy was not on the thirteenth.
Oh, okay.
So you're just gonna have to make that.
Okay, thank you for the correction.
No problem.
Perry, how many new, new homes have been plotted to, to date? You said forty-nine permits, but have those, how many are new?
I can't give you that number because the last few, uh, they got my permits up at the courthouse. Because they collected all my two sixteen permits and they said they'd be back in a short order. But I'd be more than happy to give you a much better detail than we have our next meeting.
Okay.
And you'll have the HBA one too, for the housing, the homeowners association or whatever that me and Vance put together. And so you'll get a full report.
Okay, if you could add them to that spreadsheet that I sent you so we have them by subdivision as well, that would be great.
Uh, did I get a spreadsheet?
Permits, permitted. The spreadsheet is on Excel.
I'll have to look back and see, you did that last month, I think, then.
Uh, no, it was a couple months ago now.
Okay, oh, it was in April, because you picked up that stuff right in April and then.
Yeah, and I haven't, nothing's been added since.
Okay.
Because it's, it's by, it's one section's by month and then there's another that's just totals.
I'll see what I can do to it.
Okay, you're good.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Yep, all right. Adam, what do you got?
The only exciting thing I got is chestnut. We had, uh, another storm sewer out there that, uh, started to collapse. So we've got both sides of chestnuts, it's on the north side, west end, uh, had a couple sinkholes in it, so we've got both those torn up right now. Uh, tomorrow morning, they'll get concrete and they'll be puliconed by Friday probably so we can get traffic back on them. Only thing on that is, kind of falls back on the reconstruction of it. We do have one hump in the storm sewer, right where we're fixing, pipe was down at about three quarters full of water. Unfortunately, the hump happens to land right underneath the driveway. So talking with Jimmy, we've, uh, talked a little bit about it and talked about televising before we get real crazy about, uh, what we really need to do in there as far as fixing. Televise, clean it and televise it, don't know what the cost would be, more like that, but.
This pipe that has got the hump in it too was probably half, well, maybe not half, at least a third full of whatever was washing out of the street was sitting in this pipe.
Sure.
They did clean that today, Jetway did, in hopes of increasing the capacity of that sewer, at least getting the sand and gravel and whatever else out of there, so.
It's, it's still gonna flow when it storms, but there's always gonna be water standing in it.
Up, up the driveways that hump.
The driveway doesn't really look like, you can't tell on the driveway that it moved, but it's probably twelve inch rise in the pipe.
Oh, my goodness.
It's, from, from where, from where the, the manhole is right next to wherever we're working, it's like a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty feet from that, so it's twelve inch.
About a third of the way into the, into the driveway.
The way that area moves around there, you'd think we're under a volcanic, uh, fault zone or something.
The storm sewer structures that they replaced today that were failing were two feet deep.
I was gonna say, thank you for fixing that sinkhole, because I saw that last week and I was gonna bring it to you guys' attention.
Yeah, so.
You could like look down and see them.
About the most exciting thing I got. That's it.
Okay, cool. All right, thanks. And then I've got dot, 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 and we get to the auditor.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what.
You're up.
Uh, typically what I do every year is, uh, we take, I'm gonna just go through this real quickly, but at the end of June, we're halfway through the year, we take a good hard look at this in conjunction with budget time.
Yep.
So I'm gonna go real, get real brief here, we got, uh, I think I got a point or two.
When it does work, they're awesome.
Yeah. One point one six in the general fund, uh, or, excuse me, checking, we got one point two in, in the general fund. I, I would, fund's in good shape, uh, blah, blah, blah. Let's, let's go right, keep going, David Hoover's driving there. Quote in the second page of the balance sheet there. And these, these account, yeah, keep going.
Keep going.
Yeah, keep going. These accounts that are in a deficit position, that's all gonna get corrected as this funding comes through, so let's not get too alarmed at that. Way in the bottom, if we go to water and sewer, we are working, it is still in a deficit position, but we're gonna work on that, uh, and we are working on that with, uh, revenues, raising revenues, so we're, we're gonna probably put a big dent in that as time goes on. Uh, next page, I think, is our list of.
Quick question, Vance on that, has it at least stabilized or?
Yes, it, it has, actually.
Oh, good.
We're going in the right direction anyway.
Okay, good.
We do have three hundred and, uh, keep going, David. Uh, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, thousand in CDs out there in money market accounts, which we can tap into anytime we feel necessary. And as we go to the third page, these are the, uh, bond and interest payments that we have due yet this year, go way down to the bottom, Dave, and the obligations remaining yet this year are about eighty-four crap. So we are current and we've got six million in debt here, but, uh, that does not include, uh, um, Lost River, so that will.
So I have a question for Vance on the very first page.
Yes. First page of the balance sheet.
Yeah, the very first page, if you could go up there. You had, um, and I know we've talked about this before, you talked about Sleepy Hollow, Riverdale, and there were some funds that was in.
I had hold in.
That you had, that you were holding for future, whatever.
Yes.
So that, part of that was part of, I don't, I don't remember if it was both, but they were part of, we talked about a, an assessment district to do an overlay or something. And I think it could have been both of these streets. And would it be possible to utilize this, these funds to cover the cost of that overlay in that, in those developments?
Your answer is yes, that's what it's there for. When they were township, that money went to Cass County. My pleasure sent it back to me as, as they got it next.
I don't see it in specific town.
So go all the way, it's on the very top.
Yep, it's fifty-three.
Have to go all the way to the tippity top.
Fifty-three thousand.
Keep going.
That those people have in their fund, yeah, way to the top, Dave.
First page.
Right there, the fourth one down.
Uh, wait a minute, fifty-three right there.
No.
Yes, that money is available.
So that could be an option, because we had also talked about the, the reason there, the assessment district was not done and the rural project was not put in for this year was because if those neighborhoods are going to be offered, Senator, the option for Senator Sewer within the next, say, three to five years, then why would you put the road in and then rip it up and do that and then do it again? So it made more sense to wait and figure out what our long-term plan is before we go back, because it's, the overlay is not crucial. However, it is something to, for the council to know that those funds are available if and when we even go into a Senator Sewer project, that, yeah, these neighborhoods do have some money.
Right.
That could offset some of the cost too.
It, it, uh, it stands as a liability to me because we do owe that money sometime in the future, absolutely, you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on the revenue side, uh, going down a little bit farther, Dave, we are in good shape, we're a little bit ahead of, of what we projected there, so that looks good.
What's, uh, what's putting us ahead? What specifically?
The deputies, just kidding.
Well, more, you know, property tax revenue, that was a little more than I can expect it, so.
Okay.
We can't complain about that.
Should, Vance, uh, building permits and street bonds, should that be split up? Because street bond money we give back, correct?
Yes, we do.
So should it be just permits?
No, well.
And it'll count for both?
I, I group them together because as we, as we go to the appropriation side here, you will see that there's money going out.
But given a quick look now, I see, wow, we've got forty-four thousand that we got in building permits, then I'd have to take another line and subtract it. Does that make sense?
I.
So at the end of the year, we would have total permits that we collect.
Okay, I've never.
But if you could tell me that number, that's fine. At the end of the year.
I could.
Okay.
But I guess I've always grouped them together, whether right or wrong, but.
And we still have zero for home state credit, it looks like.
Correct.
So.
Good, okay, backing up, because your seventy-five thousand for the budget would be permits we collect for the year.
Yes, correct. Yeah, I forgot something, Dave, could you go back to the first page of the balance sheet, I totally spaced this one out there. Sales tax revenue.
Yeah, I was gonna say where was the.
Yeah, keep going, keep going, keep going, down, 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 uh, right there. But I got a, uh, ACH for five dollars and seventeen cents.
Are you kidding me?
No.
Yeah, okay, so what's, did you follow up on that at all?
Not yet, I'm gonna wait till my defesa comes in this month, which should be any day now. So I'm not exactly, I'm just hoping that they're behind.
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering, if that might be what the situation is here because I can't imagine they can, five dollars, they can collect that in ten minutes up at the bar.
Yeah, no kidding.
So.
I've heard it paid without my, on my cable bill three times.
You already paid your five dollars.
Yeah, I paid that five bucks out, right? Anyway.
I'm hoping it will eventually catch up.
Yeah, okay.
But the thing you gotta remember here now, this is the fund balance, so if, if we collect a thousand dollars in May, I mean, in June and spend five hundred, you will, it, the net effects is always gonna be in your fund balance.
Sure.
So that would be the money on hand all the time. Okay, let's go to the appropriations table quickly here, because, uh. Yeah, keep going.
Keep going?
Keep going. And as far as money out of the general fund, keep going down a little bit. We're, we're in good shape here, we budgeted quite a bit of money and we're, well, we're halfway there, so we'll see what happens. So all in all, you know, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, I was gonna say, yeah, you're not seeing anything that we need to be a little bit more cautious of here.
Not yet, I think we're right on schedule, actually.
Really? We've already blown, uh, Lucas's budget.
Well, that's true, but we, we look at the bottom line, each individual.
I know, I know, you can, we can save in some areas or whatever, but.
So, uh, again, I'll go through this in more detail next month, but one quick hype word on the budget situation this year, there's been a legislative change, uh, Bill twenty-two eighty-eight that says, uh, by August tenth of each year, we need to have our budget in place, okay? This is not gonna be a three-month deal like it was last year, and I know it took a little longer because you guys were new at it, but we need to have a public hearing uh, sooner than September, or no sooner than September seventh to finalize it. What I'm saying is they moved everything a month ahead.
Yes, we're not waiting till October, no. Yep.
Yes. So what I, I will schedule, what I would like to see, Mr. Mayor, is if it's okay with you, we may be looking at a special meeting in July to, to solely look at our budget, because it gets so late at night.
No, I would, in fact, I was gonna recommend we do that, because that is like, well, one thing we focus on from.
Yeah, and that would be the only item on the agenda, so we can take a hard look at it and.
Wouldn't we want our portfolios to bring forward their budgetary portions?
Well, you have noticed now.
Right, but that, I guess that's what I'm saying first is versus us as the council looking forward to that, what? Only me.
What I'm going to do, I hope, I don't know if I'll get it this week, but I will send you guys some preliminary numbers that I'm gonna put together for eighteen, so you got a lot of time to look at and study and think about what you're gonna talk about, but I would say tighten your belts, uh, let's not get too.
Long state revenue's going down, it's coming this way, so.
I know, but we have some things that are gonna keep punching us in the face, so.
Well, so.
That our, that our residents want the services.
So let's talk about then, in lieu of that, implementing something like Valley City has, like they have their R and R budget. Where they add that infrastructure fee on every utility bill, it's only ten or eleven bucks. The same as we talked about adding vector control and whatever it is, a dollar or two a month, but. Recouping this in small amounts that, that goes into, so your R and R budget goes into your road repair. And your equipment repair and wherever kind of, you know, having that maintenance fund available, because. We've never done that as a city, and every time some thing comes up. Everything's always out of pocket and it just can't be.
I agree.
And this way, we have that money available so that we start going into these infrastructure projects, we have money that the city can commit. Whatever percentage it is. That we agree, but it's coming out of that, and we've just been collecting it a little bit at a time. Now, how we go about doing that?
Some detail.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest, if you think about this, sometime between the, after the tenth of July meeting, somewhere between that and the twenty fourth. And we have a special meeting so we can take a hard look. At the second meeting in July and the first meeting in August, because we gotta be done by then. And it's up to you what you wanna call it. That's all I got.
The seventeenth is our July?
Wow.
The seventeenth is the other July meeting?
Twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth, yeah.
Don't you guys meet the first and third Monday?
But it's a holiday.
Yes, you're on tenth and seventeen.
No, we're doing tenth and twenty fourth.
And then we'll get off back on schedule next month.
Yeah, we're out of sync on, in July. Okay?
So Vance, one question, on the disbursements for general fund checking in May, that KPH four hundred, PM a thousand. I take it that was for something else?
That was your request, number one.
Okay.
I covered that.
So we, we covered the first one.
We're already a hundred eighty one into this.
Absolutely, yep. One hundred percent, you are correct. You guys gotta think about this now, what you're doing here.
While you were gone, John, talked to, I talked to John, and the bonding company said July fifteenth.
Guaranteed it?
I'm not gonna, yeah, I'm not gonna say that. But that's better than August seven, that's three weeks.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I'm slow, but what guaran, when do you get a guarantee? I mean, do they just, July fifteenth?
There's no guarantees, you're not gonna know how long it's gonna take to sell a bond.
But I'm saying, would you guarantee you're gonna get them? If we knew we were gonna guarantee, if we were guaranteed we'd get the bonds, I'd feel a lot better. I mean, which we should feel, I mean, there just seems like a little hint of doubt.
Well, these bonds get distributed all over the country.
Right.
Investors pay a look at and say, I'll have a piece of this, a piece of that, whatever. There is, there are no guarantees that they will sell, they typically always have.
Twenty six, I got open. Twenty fifth.
Earlier in the week versus later, because. I will be a troll generally. Ushering most of the last part of July.
How's your list of?
We're just thinking the twenty, the twenty fourth. Of July might be a little bit of an issue for some of us on the council. Sharon's a cheaply out of town, we can make that adjustment if we have to, if we have to switch it, the twenty fourth or the twenty sixth. We don't wanna do that tonight.
No, let's do it on the tenth.
So, Vance, what you're talking to sometime between the tenth and the, and our, July tenth and the next meeting is when you'd like to have that.
If we have to go after or later in the month, that's fine, just.
Yeah.
I just wanted to vote some, a specific time period.
Agreed.
Send something out, we can attend.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it's not perfect to have three in a row.
How do you feel about your, uh, liquid?
On Thursday is our shut off day notice, so hopefully next month's statements will look a lot better.
All right. Anybody got anything else here, otherwise I'm gonna. Call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
John makes a motion, Dave was quick for the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're done.
Jim, I have a question.
Can you press it?
Stop and then forget it.